We're going to go right along to the next portion of this event, which I'm super excited about because we are highlighting educators. While the those in charge of educators, I suppose, are amazing school board candidates. So I'm going to introduce our moderator, Ben Bowman. Ben is the vice chair of the Tiger Twalton School Board. In his day job, he is an innovation and partnership strategist with the Oregon Department of Education. In this capacity, he works with school district leaders, state associations, and other external partners. His recent projects have included Ready Schools Safe Learners, which provides guidance for navigating COVID-19. All Students Belong, which prohibits hate symbols and reimagine school discipline. That sounds fantastic. Thank you. And Elevating Student Voices and Policy Decisions also sounds fantastic. Thank you, Ben. I know you're such a champion for young voices. He is one of the founders of Pact with Pride, which is founded in response to the COVID-19 school closures. It's now one of the largest food banks in the Portland area. Ben is a graduate of Twalton High School, the University of Oregon, and the Stanford Graduate School of Education. He's a former chief of staff to Representative Margaret Doherty. Take it away, Ben.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that introduction and hello, everyone. It's good to be with you today. Even though we can all see the sunshine outside our windows, it's fun to be on this Zoom together. So I'm going to go quickly through our introductions. We've got three fantastic school board candidates. In fact, three of the most qualified and impressive candidates that I've seen in Washington County in my time on this panel that I'm very excited about. I'm going to leave out a bunch of great things in their introduction and the interest of getting to our questions. So first, I'll start with our veteran. Erica Lopez is a current school board member of the Hillsborough School Board. She's a longtime Washington County resident and community volunteer. And she was elected in 2017. She's also a former student in Hillsborough School District. She's an advocate for equity in public education, student engagement, and community outreach. And in 2019, she was voted by her peers to serve on the Oregon School Boards Association Board of Directors. And she also serves on the Color Caucus, which advocates for the unique needs of students of color. She's also current chair of the school board. And in her day job, she's the project manager for the Community Development Department of the City of Hillsborough. So please join me in a silent applause for Erica. Next up, we have Dr. Karen Perez de Silva. Karen was born in El Salvador in 1980 after her mom was held hostage during the US-funded Civil War in her home country. Her family then immigrated to the United States where she received political asylum. Karen earned her undergraduate degree, two masters, a doctorate, two teaching endorsements, and an administrative license. All of her studies have focused on gaining skills and tools to give back to those whom society and education systems most often push out. Karen is on the board of the Oregon Association of Latino Administrators and works to support mentor, support and mentor the next generation of bilingual, bicultural teachers and administrators. She has over 20 years of experience in education advocating and empowering Latina, Latino, Latinx students and their families. She worked as the Eugene School District Equity Instruction and Partnerships Administrator and currently works as a leader at Education Northwest. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Perez de Silva. And then finally, in my own school district, we have Dr. Marvin Lynn. For nearly three decades, Dr. Lynn has worked as an elementary and middle school teacher and has served as a professor and administrator in institutions of higher education for the last 20 years. He's nationally recognized expert on race and the education and education for BIPOC learners. He's published dozens of research articles, book chapters, opinion pieces, and he edited a book on this topic. He's also a servant leader who serves on several state boards and national boards, including the Carnegie Project for Education Doctorate, the American Association of Colleges for Teacher Education, the Oregon Educator Advancement Council, and the Oregon Educator Equity Advisory Group. He is president of the Oregon Association of Colleges for Teacher Education. And this year, he will conclude his term as dean of the College of Education at PSU. He will continue to serve as a professor and actively pursue his research agenda. Please welcome Dr. Lynn. So this is going to be a fun panel. We've got about 30 minutes and we're going to cover a lot of ground. Folks are going to keep their answers really short at around two minutes and we're going to keep it free flowing. If folks want to jump in and interject of the panel members, they might, but I'm going to direct questions to individual panelists. In many parts of Oregon, there's a joke that the greatest qualification for a school board member is that they themselves attended public school. And you can see in Washington County, we are fortunate to have incredibly qualified and impressive candidates stepping up to run. And as you all know, our public education system is designed with these elected members overseeing the local systems. And so it doesn't really work unless you have folks like these three candidates coming forward. So one more time before we jump in, join with a silent applause. So with that, I'm going to start with our veteran, Director Lopez. So you've been on the school board for the last four years and it has been a really wild time in public education with lots of disruptions and lots of new factors that people didn't predict. In your view, as someone who's been on the board, what do you see as the greatest challenges and/or opportunities facing public education in Oregon today?
Hi, everyone. Definitely, I think that the pandemic impacted everyone in the entire world. And we were all, nobody escaped the challenges that came with that. When it comes to public education, especially K through 12, we're on our way to return back to school and, you know, creating our new normal. But we still have to deal with the issues that we had before even the pandemic was here. And our biggest issue that we have is how we fund public education in Oregon. This, as a board member and previous, previously when I was serving on the Budget Committee also for HSD, it just creates so much instability. And it just hampers our ability to really plan for the future when every year we have to contend with like, Lindsay just mentioned, the current budget is short. And I think one of the biggest things that we can do in this regard is really explain when our school districts and our chief financial officers for our districts, they create our budget and they pencil out what is our current service level. This is the amount that is needed to just maintain what we currently have in our districts. That amount that is penciled out by our district is not the amount that the legislature uses to create their budget. So there's this misalignment of what they think it's going to cost us and what it actually costs us. And so I think that getting that aligned so that we can actually budget appropriately, not just for current service level, but then to actually invest in the things that we want to do is one of the biggest issues that we have in education. And I think this is a challenge that is for all of us. Most of your school board districts do not have a paid lobbyist. So it's our school board members, it's our community members, the ones that are having to explain this and trying to advocate for this change. So that's where I see is our biggest struggle.
I really appreciate you bringing that up. I was just told by our chief financial officer that the $9.1 billion budget would require 80 teachers in our district to be laid off in order for us to be able to continue. Very, very disastrous scenario. But I want to talk to, I want to turn to Dr. Perez de Silva. You chose to step up and run during a really a transformative moment in public education. You've got a lot of experience in as a teacher, as an administrator. So why step forward now to serve in the board role?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Buenos dias. Buenos dias todavía. Almost good afternoon, I guess, but still good morning. I chose to run right now because I want to use my skills, my, not only my life skills that I've learned as immigrating to the United States, being a student in our public schools with special ed needs at the time that I arrived, being an English language learner and supporting my family in my community in understanding the US education system as well as my formal education and my work experience to really support our schools at this time. Because when we come onto the school board, we're going to have to hit the ground running. As Ms. Lopez, our school board member Lopez mentioned, we have not only the safety and the reopening of our schools, but also that funding long term. We have to really advocate to fully fund our student investment account. And also in Beaverton, we have the bond that will be coming up that pays for upgrading our schools for safety. And then also the levy that will be coming up and that covers about 100 teachers, as far as I understand. So there's pieces where we'll need the whole community to come out and support. And I think this is a time for me to step up, knowing what I know about education and really be there for our kids as an advocate and then also for our community.
Thank you, Dr. Perez de Silva. We are grateful that you are running. Dr. Lynn, Marvin, I want to ask you about a hot topic in TTSC and I think all schools in Washington County. And this kind of gets to your academic expertise too. One thing we've heard in our district from a small number of folks, but a sizable number of our community is you're spending too much time on equity. You're spending too much time talking about anti-racism and you're really distracting from what school districts are supposed to be about. What's your response to that as someone who's studied this and is a statewide and national expert on educational equity and anti-racism? How would you respond to parents with those criticisms?
Thank you, Ben, and thank you to the Washington County Democratic Party for having me. I'm just so glad to be here. Lifelong Democrat here and so just happy to be affiliated with this great group. Well, as you know, we have always had a problem with race in this country. And there have been significant inequalities along those lines in terms of race, but also class, gender. You could look at issues of sexuality and gender identity. And so there are communities, of course, who would rather not see those divisions and those issues and would rather, I think, pretend that they don't exist, that we live in a fair and meritocratic society. And of course, we do not. And it's important to understand that we do not live in a fair and meritocratic society and that that has to be taught so that we can have our children be problem solvers, right? You know, my 16-year-old son is very involved with the Tiger Twalton Student Union, with the Associated Student Body and other groups with this knowledge, right? And I think approaches every situation with this full understanding of our history and who we are and where we are so that he can move forward with approaches that actually make sense for all people. I think that if we sort of embrace a limited perspective, we're going to have limited solutions.
Very, very well said. And I'm going to turn to Director Lopez with a similar question because I know this has also been something you've heard in Hillsborough. So what does educational equity mean to you? And why is it important for school board members to really deeply understand this challenge and be prepared to make advances as a board member?
Yeah, thank you, Ben. I think that this is actually an area where the pandemic has really created an opportunity for everyone to realize what equity means. Equity means that people have different needs and require different solutions to meet those needs. And I think every family has had to grapple with that as we've had to endure this pandemic, that their child has unique needs. And I think that understanding is actually a gift from this, you know, really traumatic and tragic year is to really have that opportunity to understand that we're all experiencing the same thing, but we're requiring different things in order to make it, right? And so when it comes to education, you have to understand that there's, that it's not about what people have more of, but also what obstacles people are experiencing, like linguistic barriers or even I always think about something as even how we engage in society and what is normal and in your circles of, you know, in your cultural context and all of that. And when you enter into spaces where you don't see that, that's something that you have to learn, right? That doesn't, that doesn't come naturally to those of us that maybe did not engage in this in spaces. And so we have to learn those things. So equity means that you're either removing those barriers or addressing those needs and providing some resources to students, families in our community that need that.
Dr. Perez de Silva, Director Lopez brought up COVID and the impact that COVID has had in terms of shining a light on some of the inequities and deepening other inequities. You have the privilege of being unopposed, I believe, in your election. So you will be, oh, no, you do. You did draw a candidate. Okay. So assuming you win and you are elected to the school board, how will you think about addressing the disparities that have been heightened during the pandemic? What will be your plan or some of your priorities once you get there to really nail down the challenges that the pandemic has exposed?
Thank you. For the, I do have somebody running against me and I wanted to also clarify that the levy covers about 300 teachers. I said 100. So it's a lot of teachers with their levy and that funding. But what to address first, I would say we have over 10% of our students in the Beaverton School District that are currently failing, not passing or have incompletes. And so we need to figure out what concrete steps and procedures, how can we use our budgets to support these students and getting them the accelerated learning opportunities that they need. We also need to find the students who have actually completely dropped off our radar. And we need to figure out what are their, what supports do we need to be providing? We have families that have been highly impacted with the housing in their housing or have lost jobs that have basic needs that are not being met. We also have, you know, students who have been away from colleagues, friends, and relationships. And so we have to address the social emotional learning needs of our students. We have students who are part of our LGBTQ plus, 2SI plus community who, for them, school was a safe place in the sense of they had people that could check in. They could check in, people that would be supporting them. And that's not also that always occurring sometimes in their home spaces. So we really need to address the whole student, their needs. And I also know that we have families that we need our students, we want our students back in a safe space. So addressing with our budgets that continuous safety and procedures for our students and staff and community to be part of our, you know, the whole day being in school.
Really well said. Dr. Lynn, I want to ask you about another sort of hot topic that we've heard a lot about, which is student voice or student engagement. And I do know that you will be joining the Tiger 12 School Board. You're unopposed this election, which is exciting. So as a board member, what do you think the role of student voice is? How should, how should board members be thinking about interacting with, with students in the district and thinking about what they have to say?
Great. And let me say a little bit more too about educational equity, Ben. Part of what I wanted to share with you all today was a little bit of my story as a a student who hailed from the south side of Chicago, a poor kid. We struggled and it was teachers really who stood in the gap for me. And it was teachers who cared, who were committed to my success, but who also saw themselves as really being accountable for my learning and for my future success as an adult, even when I didn't have that support at home. And so I gathered the teacher preparation because I felt like I could help to develop those, those teachers, right? I think school board members have a really interesting role to play in terms of thinking about, particularly in our case, supporting a superintendent who's already doing some outstanding work in that area and really making sure that that work is even, that is even more focused of the work that she does in terms of really ensuring that we have teachers who are committed to the success of all students and are going to see culture and language and race and other identity markers as really an asset, as something to build on and not something to shy away from. So, so, but student voice obviously is very important to me. I've learned a lot from my son, who is, like I said, very active in school and who said to me, you know, Dad, I think you should run. I said, I don't know. I'm very busy. And, and he said, no, I think you should, you know. And, and so he's encouraged me a lot, but he's also taught me about the work that they've been involved in through the Tiger Twalton Student Union and through other groups and how organized they are, how brilliant they are. I mean, these, these kids are so impressive, just in terms of their understanding, their skill set, the way they speak, the way they think. And we would be foolish, you know, not to rely heavily on their voices as we are making major decisions for the district. And so I want to sort of bring them in as much as we possibly can, Ben. I know that we have a representative who's not necessarily from the Tiger Twalton Student Union. Perhaps we can also figure out a way to, to really formally involve the student union in some way in terms of particularly providing us with advice on issues that are important and that matter to students.
I'm so excited to work with you on the board, Dr. Lynn. So back to Director Lopez, I want to zoom out a little bit. We are here at a Washington County Democrats fundraiser and sometimes you'll hear folks say, well, school boards are nonpartisan positions and, you know, there's no, no politics involved at the school board level. But you pursued and received the endorsement of the Washington County Democrats. So I'm curious, why did you pursue the endorsement of the Democrats and why are you a proud Democrat?
Thanks, Ben. Yeah, I think that oftentimes with any endorsement and how I look at endorsements from any organization is that they get to know me as an individual and as a candidate and understand my values and my vision and goals for the district and public education for our community. And if my values and my vision aligns with that organization, they're going to endorse you because you're the best candidate for that seat. And I think that the Washington County Democrats platform, a lot of the issues that they're targeting or addressing, and not just around education, but around other things that impact our families. And we have to remember that our families and our students don't live in silos in our communities. They interact with all of these other systems and all of these other agencies. And so a lot of the issues that impact learning is not just in the classroom. I think Karen was mentioning, you know, the economic instability that has happened and houselessness and food insecurity, all of those things impact learning. And so I think that when I look at the platform and the things that we're trying to, they're trying to accomplish and working towards are the same things that align with my values as well. And there are things that are supporting our families, like access to affordable healthcare. I mean, our students need that in order to be successful. So there are many things I think that align and there are other organizations also that share similar values. And when you can partner together, it's, you're going to move faster to accomplish those goals if you can have partners with you. So that's why I'm excited to continue to work. And I think when I ran, you know, four years ago and I would, and all of us in this chat, you would re-remess to not see the obvious of how much more diversity we have in our party. And that is amazing in four years, right? How many candidates you can see here? That in itself, also, when you look at the slate of candidates that the party endorses and supports, I think it speaks volumes as well. So I'm also proud of that. And one thing that I wanted to touch on just very briefly, that the question for Dr. Lynn around student voices is you can't get to a solution. They're the consumers of the service that we provide. If you're not actually interacting with that consumer to know if it's working, if they're getting what they're needing, how are you going to solve those issues? And I think that, as you mentioned, one of, I think, one of the biggest points that I have of disagreement with my, with my opposition is that, that they want to be the voice for their students. When I feel that students have their own voice and that needs to be honored and celebrated and they, that they can feel empowered to engage in these systems. And just because their child doesn't mean that their voice means any less. So I just wanted to touch on that. Thank you.
That's really beautifully said. Thank you, Director Lopez. Back to Dr. Perez de Silva, we have a new president. We're all very excited about that. But there's still a lot of questions about what that will mean for public education and how much change is going to sort of filter down to the local level. Zooming out, what are your hopes for the Biden administration? What do you hope that Joe Biden and his secretary of education will do for public education that will benefit our students here in Washington County?
Yeah, I would say that we continue to look at kind of full funding of our schools so that we are able to provide, with the CARES Act, for example, they provided more opportunity. Right now, they're providing opportunities for us to be able to provide some summer programs with that extra funding. Include, also, there's been funding extended for our families to be, for, for safety and continuing to increase like all the supplies that the schools need in order to provide a safe environment. That's quite costly. And so they continued with the CARES Act to give us money for that. We haven't heard yet what exactly the take will be, but it sounds like it will be supportive of our, of our unions and our staff. I'm curious to see where we go with state testing and the time that it's quite intensive and it takes for our students to participate in that and for them to, the teachers to take time out of the day to address that. But again, I think for me, it's looking at how can we fully fund our schools to have the leverage that they need in order to provide for the unique experiences of each community. And that would be for me, something that's going to be key.
Really well said. And I'm looking forward to, I see our favorite Congresswoman has joined. So we'll hear from her in a little bit. Dr. Lynn, you're a higher education expert. You know, you're the dean at PSU and have a lot of experience with teacher preparation programs. What are your thoughts on the current higher education system and how we can improve it for the students? You're going to be serving at the K-12 level, who are going to be navigating that higher education system. Obviously, we know there's affordability challenges and some other issues. But what are, what are some of your goals for how we can improve the higher education system?
Well, thank you, Ben, for that question. Like P-12 public education, higher education in the state of Oregon is significantly underfunded. And so as a dean, as a professor, as someone who's worked on a lot of these state boards, I have consistently argued for increased funding for higher education. The Student Success Act was an amazing thing for P-12 schools. It wasn't enough. I think more needs to be done, but higher education really did not benefit from that. And so we are still dealing with the need to have to cut budgets in places where we simply can't really afford to do so. So that's a significant challenge. I agree with a lot of the perspectives that I hear that come from the community that suggest that we need to do more to ensure that people who come out with degrees actually are prepared to work someplace, that they're, they have the skills that they need. They have both the intellectual skills, but other types of skills that they need to be successful in the workplace. I, so I agree with that. And I do think that that is increasingly going to be something we focus on. I think we need to be thinking about transferability between our schools and colleges, particularly the, you know, I know the PCC person can talk all day about the issues that students have when they transfer from PCC to Portland State, for example. And I know what happens at other big four-year institutions too, where they have all these credits that they can't use. And so it extends their time to degree and it leads unfortunately to increased dropout rates among students and particularly students of color. And so that's my last point is that higher education is going to have to get really serious about developing a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion and really valuing, protecting, supporting, and graduating BIPOC students at a much higher rate than I think we're currently seeing. And that, and that does mean that we're going to have to shift our focus a little bit to be much more intentional about serving those historically underserved populations. Thank you.
Marvin, Director Lopez, I think this will be our last question for you. You've got some experience with lobbying and with communicating with state legislators about public education. We talked about the state budget and how the $9.1 billion would have a negative impact on a lot of our, a lot of our schools. Aside from financial investments in the state school fund, what would your message be to state legislators who are in the middle of a really important legislative session where they're making a lot of big decisions about what Oregon's going to look like post-pandemic? You know, there's, there's a lot of folks in Hillsborough who hope that you run for the legislature someday. But for the folks who are there now, what do you, what do you, what do you have, what message do you have for them in terms of what does public education need right now?
Yeah, I think that this is, when I think about like how to make those really difficult decisions that they have to make and where to put money in and where to kind of advocate for, I always think about it in a way as an investment. And I feel like children and education is an investment into our future of what kind of community we want to live in, what kind of people we want to have in our community. And it is a lot easier to invest in children now and help them be successful than to try to fix adults that fall through our system and that are grappling with a lot of these other issues that come out of that. So I, I advocate for my legislators that are on here on our call and that take that. You know, think about where do you want to see your investment after you're done being in the legislature? What is your legacy and what do you want to leave behind for our state and for our communities? And I think that somebody just put in the chat and it popped up and it says that the budget is a moral document. If you're not seeing how the investments that you're making are not targeting or are creating barriers or not serving specific people that have been underserved, and we need to make some changes so that you can add that into your lens, how you build your budget. And a lot of counties, a lot of cities have started to do that, to look at how they budget with the racial equity lens and racial impact, just like we do, like our environmental impact. Doing the same thing and look at it also from how we can do that as, as an investment for our children. So I think So I think that's what I, I will leave you with for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lopez. Um, so Dr. Perez de Silva, uh, you mentioned you have an opponent. I know Director Lopez has an opponent. If folks heard this call and they're feeling inspired by you and they wanna help see you get to the board, how can they help you? How can they help your campaign be successful?
Great. Let's pass the word around. Um, I'll put it in the, um, in the chat, www.karenperezdesilva.com. So one is, um, go to our website, get some information about us, talk to your friends about the candidates that you see. Um, that's word of mouth is really how you can actually get, um, friends and relatives to vote. Um, advocate for people to vote, um, in this election. Not everybody comes out, but it's extremely important that we get people on our board, on our school boards and in our city councils that, um, really speak to the values of our community and the values, your values really. Um, because I don't know if we realize, but you know, the school boards, they're, we're educating our whole, you know, new generation of students. And if we have school board members on there that want to limit or do not see the whole child or that want to limit access to our students, um, about, you know, just if anything from, you know, their history, we wanna, we're all immigrants to this community, all of us. Uh, we have our native community who's been here, um, but all of us have a story. And we wanna make sure that we're addressing the whole child. To be able to help us, I think part of it is funding us, getting out on the street and helping us get, um, the word out, whether it's with lit drops, like, um, Mayor La- Beatty was saying, she's in a competition with, um, Felicita about how many steps. We did eight thousand steps last weekend, um, to drop lit, um, with my, you know, with Edgar and my two girls. We walked eight thousand steps up and down Beaverton, letting people know that the election's coming up, that there's great candidates out there to vote. We're going out again today. Um, reach out, we can help, you can be one of those people getting the information out and also the funding. It really, I, this is the first time I've run and I had no clue how much you have to raise to really, um, get mailers. We have to, um, for school boards, we have to get the whole community. So it's like twenty thousand votes, voters out there. To get one mailer to twenty thousand voters, it's over, um, eleven thousand dollars. Um, I don't have that money in the bank. So the more you can donate to our campaigns, the more it helps, um, all of us. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I also wanted to, you know, David Hyman is here. He's, uh, also running for the school board. I know he doesn't have the money, like I don't have money, but he also has a passion running for Twolton, um, another really great school board member. But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perez de Silva. And we are out of time unfortunately, but, um, I just wanted to thank our three panelists for, um, for joining us today. Please give them a silent round of applause. And while you're clapping, what I will say is, uh, I agree. When I was running for the school board two years ago, when I, the, the most exciting moments were when I would get a fifty or one hundred dollar contribution, particularly from like a Democrat out my, outside my district, cause I knew it meant they believed in me. So I'm gonna chip in fifty bucks to, um, Dr. Perez de Silva and Director Lopez. And I hope that they will put their websites in the, uh, in the chat. So anyone else who wants to, to chip in can get their wa- wallets nice and warm for when the fundraising portion of, uh, this afternoon, uh, begins. But thank you again for listening and thanks again to our panelists.